Uh, seat is 9:30 and the July meeting of the Wood County Board of Supervisors will come to order. The clerk has taken the floor. I'm sorry. Supervisor Brey.
Oh, there he's in the van.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you Supervisor Brey. At this time, I would call on Vice Chair Ozar to come forward and give you an occasion and ask the body to remain standing for our further reading and that.
Thank you. If you so desire, please join me in prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thank you for this opportunity to come today to serve the taxpayers of Wood County. We thank you for your many blessings and help us to be forever grateful. We pray for the men and women in the service and for their families. We ask that you'll cover them with a special layer of protection. Go with us as we deliberate issues today. We pray for the people in the South that are struggling with the floods and we just ask that you will meet their every need as only you can do. Thank you again for this opportunity to serve, help us to be diligent, responsible, and wise servants. Words in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Vice Chair Ozar. Reading of last month's minutes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there would have to be an amendment to those minutes. I apologize when I typed up the minutes. I had a motion of second to approve the filing appointments and then there were two spaces, a blank, and the motion carried by voice vote. The minutes will need to be amended to reflect that. Supervisor Han was appointed to a two-year term to the CDBG Housing Committee. Supervisor Brey to a one-year term on that committee. Scott McHauly, Mike Whitley, and Leo Kudrowski to the Wildlife Advisory Committee. And the Supervisors Han and Lightnum to the Renewable and Sustainable Committee with a term ending of 2020.
Would entertain a motion to approve those minutes as corrected?
No, you push them.
Okay, so the motions and seconds are going to be on your screen. There we go.
Thank you. We have a motion in second to approve the amended minutes from the June meeting. Is there any additional corrections to those minutes? Additional corrections? See none, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Thank you. Excusals today, we have Supervisor Hamilton is excused. Resignations, we have none. Appointments, three-year terms to the Board of Adjustment. Lance Plimmell, Mark Holbrook, and James Tremeling. I would entertain a motion to approve those. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to approve those appointments. I think we can do this with a voice vote. Is there any discussion on the motion? See none, all in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Thank you. Brings us to public comment. Is there anyone here that wishes to make public comment at this time? Public comment. Sir, please come forward. I think the microphone's on. Identify yourself and you have three minutes, sir.
My name's Gordon Gottviet, I'm a resident.
Could you turn the mic on, sir? I think it's off.
My name's Gordon Gottviet, I'm a resident of Port Edwards and I was wondering what happened with the water resolution that we presented to the county board?
This is a public comment, sir. We are not going to have any dialogue here or address any questions. You can make public comment.
Okay. My comment is then that we presented a water resolution and we've never heard anything back.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to make public comment at this time? Public comment from anyone? We move on. Acknowledges and recognitions. Voting objection, I'm going to come down and do this one myself. Are we on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Those of you present probably know this man better than I do, most of you. He's been a fixture at county board as long as I have, I'm sure, and I probably understands many of the issues as well as we do. He's been a fixture, like I said, as long as I can remember. But those of you who are privileged enough to be on town boards or do interviews at the local radio station probably have gotten to know Jesse even a little better and realized what a wonderful guy he was and what a great job he did for River City's Community Access. His professionalism and overall jovialness, if that is a word, was always appreciated. I know that when I got to know him through my interview process, we had some back and forth that was very interesting and a great guy to work with. And so Supervisor Clendenin, when he heard that Jesse retired, thought it would be appropriate for us to somehow acknowledge him and I'm in full agreement with that and as well as I'm sure most of the board is. And so we've come up with a, an award or a plaque, certificate, I guess, for Jesse and I'd like to read what it says. Presented to Jesse Austin in recognition of service and professionalism to the Wisconsin Rapids Community Media and the Wood County Board of Supervisors. Congratulations, sir.
Knowing you have important work, I'll be very brief. I just am paying acknowledgement to Chairperson Mahan, Co-Chair Rozar, and County Clerk Minor, and to all the members of the Wood County Board of Supervisors. Thank you so much for this, for this honor, which was unexpected. I'm flattered and a little embarrassed, but I truly appreciate it. I'm also appreciative of the fact that by working for the city of Wisconsin Rapids, recording meetings of different governmental bodies such as towns and villages and the surrounding area, and particularly of the Wood County Board of Supervisors, I've learned a lot about the power of representative government. I was born and raised in Chicago, which has a little reputation. But it wasn't until I started recording these different, these different bodies that I realized how much work you people do. I know in particular the people who work, who are here on the Board of Supervisors, you belong to different commissions and committees and that forms the basis of the work that you discuss here at these monthly meetings. So you're doing a lot of work throughout the entire month. And when you engage in your spirited discussions about some of these issues, you're doing this on behalf of your constituents. You're looking out for them. So I just wanted to say that, I just wanted to point out a Bible verse that points out that, that the superior authorities, they refer to governments of the world as superior authorities based on their relative positions of authority by God. And the exercise of that authority is only as good and effective as the people who are entrusted with that authority. And so I can say after, after being with among you people for these many years, that the people of Wood County are in very good hands. So again, thank you very much and I wish all of you the very best.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Ozer.
If I may please, I talked to Mr. Austin this morning before the meeting and he was born and raised in Chicago. He converted to being a Green Bay Packer fan when he moved to Wisconsin and now he's going to Minnesota to be with his grandchildren and he assured me that purple and gold will not be his favorite color.
Thank you again Jesse and good luck in your future endeavors. We have two special orders of business this morning. Jason Hausler from the Extension along with Matt Lippert and also Chad Schooly with his annual Parks and Forestry presentation. We will have Jason present first and then we will save Chad's report, annual report for the end of the program. So Jason and Matt, if you'd like to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Board Supervisors from Wood County. Quick update this morning, I'm at your table. I left our annual report for 2018. I'll walk through some highlights here in a little bit, but I really want to pass the, hand the floor over to Matt Lippert, our ag educator, to talk about something that Farm Techology Days is still, they keep on giving and giving and so they have a, I would say, gift for the Board of Supervisors. So Matt?
So it was, it was just a year ago that we had Farm Tech Days, July 10th, 11th, and 12th. And if you remember, it was three and a half to four years before that, that Wood County signed the enabling resolutions for us to have it here in the county. And we had a success because we had good plans and we had great weather. And so because of that, we had nice treasury at the end. So since Farm Tech Days, we've been in the process of distributing those fruits. Last fall, we distributed 111,000 to volunteer groups that served the food and did the parking at Farm Tech Days. And then we still had well over 200,000 left after that, that we distributed a large amount of that, over 200,000, in a grant process. So we gave those awards at the dairy breakfast at Marshfield, the 30th of May. So, so we, so far it's been well over 300,000 that we've distributed. I just wanted to go through a little bit of how that accounting, Wood County being such a key partner to that. So originally in two different grants, you gave us, weren't grants, loans basically, non-interest loans, county gave us $60,000 of seed money, which we have returned that money, the group has. And then we had great partners in the County Highway Department and the Sheriff's Department. And I think they were very, they didn't spend money that, anything other than frugally and carefully for us. So there was $17,800 went to the Highway Department and $16,000 went to the Sheriff's Department for services. And then in these grants, we, so we had over, over $400,000 of grant requests this last spring from 50 organizations. And there were a number of Wood County groups and departments that applied and were successful. So the Wood County Sheriff's Department applied and received for $28,683. And that was for an emergency response UTV. Some of the criteria for those grants were youth, agriculture, rural communities. And so when, when there's projects that improve safety and access in rural communities, those were pretty popular. The Wood County Land Conservation Department received $2,000 for a piece of equipment that will help with cover crops and soil conservation. And the Wood County Health Department received $21,000 to educate about how food is grown locally with some grain machines and some local partners for that. We in the Extension Office received $5,000 to do a study on milk protein components. And the 4-H people received $900 for food science projects. So a lot of good things that have come out of that. Obviously not just the county and our communities. There's a long list of fire departments and emergency response groups and, and we've had the press release of the recipients, that $200,000. And so the other thing I wanted to do today is because you have been such a great partner, is the thing they did with all of our major sponsors is to commemorate the event. We're sharing these photos of, we had over 43,000 people on those three days. And so here's an aerial of Tent City just outside Marshfield and the parking from that day. I don't know where, where you're going to display it, but they wanted you to have it. So thank you very much for helping us make this possible.
Thank you, Matt. And we look forward to having that displayed maybe in the courthouse here or somewhere else to, I guess, to display the impact that Farm Tech Days had on Wood County. So just a quick, couple of quick highlights from the annual reports. So last year, actually I just was talking with Chad in the back, we planned this on the same day again last year as we did this year, but I'm going to keep it low tech this year. So you have it in front of you, I'm not going to walk through line by line, but there are a couple of things that I want to talk about that are very poignant to Extension work. So the biggest thing you'll see on the front of your cover is that as of July 1 of this year, so just over two weeks ago, we officially transitioned to UW-Madison. We're now the UW-Madison Division of Extension. And we all, you know, I joked with people that the earth shaped and we had, you know, some tremors and, and we felt that as an organization, but that's not the truth. The truth is, we're still the same great service with, with a new brand, a new logo, and a new intimate partner in Madison. And so leveraging those resources for the people of Wood County, for the services of US County Supervisors and of our staff. So we're really excited about the transition. It's actually opened more doors than we could have ever imagined thus far. So more locally, it's important to note that we really maximize an Extension volunteers. And so I cannot undersell, as Matt alluded to, the volunteers for Farm Tech Days are really the lifeblood of our organization. We are, our office is very staff-heavy. We invest in the people, but then those people leverage other people to go do the work that we do. So for instance, on page, they're not numbered, but 4-H. So over the last year, in 2018, 4-H volunteers, families, members have volunteered and contributed over $350,000 back into the community here in Wood County. Again, that's based upon the number of certified volunteers that enrolled, youth members. And then at the bottom, there is the, there's a matrix or a metrics that they use for calculating the value of a volunteer hour. So you see that that's listed there. So as you go through that, you'll see the volunteer, the dollar values, the return on investment for your, your investment in Extension services have paid back. Another thing I want to highlight is we've really taken a good look at where we are programming in the county. It's very easy for us to get into the Rapid centric. Our office is here, we have programs here, but we are leveraging the library system more than ever to get out into the communities and have our programming there where the people are, where they live, where they work, where they recreate, so we're visible to them. And so Family Living, Horticulture, Ag, and the less, the rest of it as it goes, are making an intentional effort to be on the communities more than ever because that's really, we're, we are Extension. We get out to the people. So Matt alluded to Farm Tech Days, that's a huge success in 2018. You know, Nancy Turk is working with Vice Chair Rozar on strategic planning and so that's kind of tangible. You can see that day in and day out. And then as we get into kind of Family Living and Horticulture and FoodWise, the number of participants through Family Living programs and FoodWise, the nutrition program that we offer, it says on, on FoodWise, 42 program series. They are series and they're multiple lessons at nine different locations. Again, getting out, school-based, community-based, we are out there. And so we are changing our colors from, you know, the blue, old blue logo to the red. And so we're, we're having some new signage and logos and business cards and kind of the promotional things printed up. But I'm happy to report that we're, we're as vibrant as ever. So if you've heard things in the media about consolidation or transitions not going smoothly, either with the Stevens Point thing or with the Extension in Madison, I guess boots in the ground, we are not seeing any of that. It is, I would say, there's always flips in the road, of course, but pretty smooth sailing with, with the transition. So I'm happy to report that. And so if there's any questions, Mr. Chairman, I can entertain questions if that's okay?
Are there any questions for Jason?
Okay. Thank you so much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Once again, Farm Tech Days, very lucrative for the county. Good numbers. And that will get us into the packet, starting on page six. The referrals on page six were passed along to the appropriate committees and people. Pages seven through 13 are minutes from the Executive Committee. Vice Chair Ozar.
The minutes from the July 9th meeting are in your packet and I just want to express my deep disappointment in the Executive Committee for making a motion and passing it to eliminate the Wellness Board. I look forward to our Human Resources Director's recommendations on how we should proceed with the implementation and the offering of those initiatives to our employees in Wood County and do not believe at this time that the Wellness Program will go away. I felt that it was very unfortunate that under an agenda item that was to discuss a policy, that the motion was made to eliminate the Wellness Board. I don't think that that's the way we need to do business as a county board. I think that we should be more deliberative and thoughtful in some of the decisions that we make. And that was horrible disappointment to me that that motion was made without any discussion with the key people that are involved in that Wellness Program. And so I repeat again that I look forward to the Human Resources Director's recommendations as to how to proceed with the Wellness Initiatives that are provided to our employees. And I just wanted to make an appeal to this county board that when we make major decisions like that, that perhaps it not ought to be in this manner, that there ought to be some discussion and thoughtful deliberation as to the removing of a major part of that program over the years that I believe has been very successful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Clendenin.
I'd also comment on that July 9th meeting. First of all, in, in, comment that I had right at the beginning was I was disappointed to see that Wood County again did not send anybody from this county to the annual conference of, what is it called?
NACL.
NACL. And nobody was there and Lance just got back from it, by the way, but he was sent there by. I just wonder about accounting the issue in the budget above this. You know, I think it should be considered. We're not going to send anybody who I belong to it. All I, all I get from NACL myself is a monthly report on the internet. And then another thing about what Adam Rozar, Supervisor Rozar was talking about is the fact that, I did talk about this briefly, I even sent the communications to that board about an article I read. And I went to the meeting and I, I heard that that was going to be addressed. And I, and I don't think it was addressed. That's where I wanted the conversation to begin. When I hear from the different people here in the county saying that, that they're, they're doing a lot of things and it's taking up a lot of their time on health and wellness and, and there's only one supervisor, and I say, well, go talk to that supervisor and that's not. And, and I know other people have questioned it, have come to it and said, why don't you have a policy? A year ago, I asked why you didn't have a policy and it didn't. And nobody addressed it. So when it come up at the Executive Committee and, and the motion was made, I did second it and I think it was very appropriate. I think it was discussed often. Thank you.
Page 14 and 15, Wellness Board Meeting Minutes. Page 16, Administrative Coordinator's Report. County Clerk on pages 17 and 18. Finance Director, pages 19 through 30. Human Resources, 31 through 36. IT, pages 37 through 40. Facilities Manager, page 41. Treasurer, page 42. Which brings us to our first resolution brought by the Health and Human Services and Executive Committee. I would ask the clerk to read that, please.
This will be Resolution 19-7-1. To amend the 2019 budget for veterans relief with a transfer of available appropriations from fund balance. Fiscal Note, no additional cost to Wood County. The additional appropriations needed in the Veterans Relief Account is available in a non-leasing fund balance and the adjustment to the budget tolls $3,825.
We have a motion in second regarding the resolution. Is there any discussion on that motion? Any discussion?
Mr. Fire hit the amend button. Mr. Fire hit the amend button. And he did it again. Twice.
The right ones don't come up.
Not until.
Very good.
Okay, we may proceed. Any further discussion on the motion? See none, please vote. And that motion passes unanimously, thank you. Which takes us to page 44 and our, our second resolution brought by the Executive Committee and I would ask the clerk to read that as well.
This will be Resolution 19-7-2. To authorize out-of-state training and travel for the Finance Director and the Deputy Finance Director. Fiscal Note, $2,500 for travel expenses and registration fee.
We have a motion in a second on the floor regarding the resolution. Is there any discussion on that motion? See none, please vote. And that motion passes unanimously as well, thank you. Which takes us to page 45 and our third resolution, also brought by the Executive Committee. Would the clerk read that, please?
This will be Resolution 19-7-3. To Accept Offer of Sale of Tax-Deemed Property. Fiscal Note, the offered amount of $21,100 minus real estate taxes and tax deed expenses incur a gain of $11,954.60.
We have a motion in second regarding the resolution. Is there any discussion on that motion? See none, please vote. And that, that motion passes unanimously as well, thank you. Takes us to page 46. Health and Human Services Committee Minutes on pages 46 and 47. Health Department, pages 48 through.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to say something about the Health Department, the meeting we had.
Go ahead, Supervisor, hold your hand.
I was ready to go down to that meeting, and that's when it stormed. I lost electricity in the house and the telephone. I lost three big sixty-year trees. The time they got everything picked up and I called in, the meeting was adjourned already. When I made out my time, I put down the meeting there, and then I put down, I was, I didn't attend. But then I was called and told that I couldn't put that down. I wouldn't get credit for going to that meeting or even putting in time, so I was deducted. I'm sorry, it stormed and rained that day. I couldn't get to the meeting, but I was intending to go.
Yeah, so the county rules are pretty clear. If you don't attend a meeting and you were listed as excused, there is no party unallowed for those meetings that you do not attend. So that's why Sherry would have deducted that.
Okay, back to the packet then. On pages forty-eight through fifty-four, we have the Health Department report. Human Services Department, pages fifty-five through sixty-one. County Veterans Office on pages sixty-two through sixty-four. Public Safety, sixty-five through sixty-nine. Coroner, page seventy. Humane Officer, pages seventy-one through seventy-four. Sheriff's Rescue, pages seventy-five through one oh four. Sheriff's Department, pages one oh five through one twenty. Which brings us to our fourth resolution brought by the Public Safety Committee and the Executive Committee. I would ask the clerk to read that, please.
This will be Resolution nineteen dash seven dash four, to provide for unanticipated revenue from the Bureau of Traffic Safety housed with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation's Division of State Patrol to finance additional patrol for speed, seatbelt, and reckless driving enforcement through September 2019. Fiscal note, the costs to be funded in the 2019 budget are in traffic police overtime line item. The adjustment to the budget totals $20,000.
We have a motion in second on the floor regarding the resolution. Is there any discussion regarding that motion? See none, please vote. And that motion passes unanimously, thank you. Takes us to page one twenty-two, our fifth resolution brought by Public Safety. Would the clerk read that, please?
This will be Resolution nineteen dash seven dash five, to cancel stale-dated checks as recommended by the auditors. Send checks from Wood County Jail and May Account per office of the Wood County Sheriff. Fiscal note, as per the resolution, the total be canceled is $156.58.
We have a motion in second on the floor regarding the resolution. Is there any discussion on that motion? See none, again, please vote. And that motion passes unanimously as well, thank you. Pages one twenty-three through one thirty-one, we have minutes from the Seat Committee. Pages one thirty-two through one forty-three, we have minutes from the Golden Sands R.C. and D. Land and Water Conservation, pages one forty-four through one forty-seven. Planning and Zoning, one forty-eight through one seventy-five. Economic Development Activities on pages one seventy-six through two oh seven. UW Extension, two oh eight to two twelve. We have a zoning ordinance request on page two thirteen, which would be a part of our sixth resolution on page two fourteen, which is brought to us by the Seat Committee. Would the clerk read that, please?
This will be Resolution nineteen dash seven dash six, to approve an amendment to the Towne and Grand Rapids zoning ordinance. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. The Towne and Grand Rapids is responsible for any costs associated with administering their town zoning ordinance.
We have a motion in second on the floor regarding the resolution. Is there any discussion on that motion? Any discussion on that motion? Please vote. And that motion passes unanimously, thank you. Takes us to page two fifteen. Pages two fifteen through two twenty, we have minutes from Judicial and Legislative Committee. Two twenty-three through two twenty-five, Citizens Groundwater Group minutes. Corp Counsel on pages two twenty-six through two twenty-eight. Criminal Justice Task Force minutes on pages two twenty-nine through two thirty-one. Again, County Clerk, two thirty-two and two thirty-three. Child Support Agency on two thirty-four. Again, Corp Counsel, two thirty-five and two thirty-six. Register of Deeds at page two thirty-seven. Clerk Minutes on pages two thirty-eight through two forty-five. Highway Commissioner, two forty-six and two forty-seven. Highway Accounting Supervisors Report on two forty-eight. Parks and Forestry, two forty-nine through two fifty-three. And there on pages two fifty-four through two seventy is the Parks and Forest Reanal Report, which we will be reviewing shortly. Aging and Disability Resource Center of Central Wisconsin on pages two seventy-one through two seventy-four. Central Wisconsin State Fair, two seventy-five through two seventy-six. Supervisor Ashback.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have a meeting last night, and the fair is probably only about a month away, Arizona, and we're hoping to have more volunteers to help us and we don't have to pay for a lot of this extra work, like ticket booth. And we're going to be setting up a raft now in the exhibition building because we're supposed to be getting some pretty nice prizes, and we could use some help if somebody wanted to attend that someday for us. At the same time, we had a state creed last bunch of night, a fundraiser, and we brought these baskets, what they call on the auction, and we raised $1,900 off of nine baskets, so that was a very good price. I mean, they almost forgot to quit bidding, you know, which is something to amaze things. So the total, it's eight hours off of our fundraising on the state creed run tonight, so.
That's a good state. The Central State Fair on pages two seventy-five through two seventy-six. Library Minutes on, did you have something, Supervisor Danning?
It's a resolution, just saying that. Uh, Memorial Library, just to let you know that we're scheduled to have a meeting tomorrow at five o'clock PM, and that's being postponed to Thursday because we could not get a call from the people.
Thank you for that. Again, various library board minutes on pages two seventy-seven through two eighty-four, which brings us sadly to our final resolution. And I would ask the clerk, can read that, please?
This will be Resolution nineteen dash seven dash seven, related to the life and public service of Gary L. Warden.
We have a motion in second on the floor. I think we can do this on a base voice board, excuse me. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, thank you very much. I believe that resolution has passed amongst these supervisors. I would just like to say, this is a very recent board member. Many of us are well aware of Gary's service to the board. I had the privilege personally to work with Gary as well for twenty years. A very interesting fellow, to say the least. Enjoyed his service here on the county board immensely. It was brought out at his funeral often how much he enjoyed his political life and serving community, and his passing is without notice, and he will be missed. Vice Chair, hold your.
I just wanted to say that he wore his Wood County pin in his going out, in his suit, that he always wore to the Wood County Board. He put his Wood County pin on his suit. I thought that was very cool.
Supervisor, hold your.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I rise as a family member, and as the person that was fortunate enough to be appointed to represent Gary. And if it pleases the body and the chair, could we please have a moment of silence?
Absolutely. When we're going to get there, I would ask the body to rise and have a moment of silence in respect for Gary L. Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of the formal packet. We will have our presentation by Chad now. Chad, you want to come forward? I think you're set up on your computers, aren't you?
You want me to do something, oh shit?
Got it.
Cue the screen.
Cue the screen.
All right. Everybody hear me, or no?
I think you have to pick up the mic and speak.
Can you hear me now? All right. Oh, this?
Yeah, that's better.
Good. I missed that. Well, thanks for the opportunity to present kind of a snapshot summary of our 2018 Parks and Forestry. And I'll be going through, basically, I'll be going through different events that we hosted, some of the bigger ones, some of the projects that we completed in the parks, and then at the end kind of go through some numbers as far as what was brought in, what the expenses were, and things like that. So just starting off with obviously what makes this run on a departmental end of things. So these are the personnel that we had for 2018. Very dedicated staff, and they do a great job in maintaining our parks and forestry areas. Additionally, we work with several different clubs and volunteers on an annual basis, from ATV, clubs, snowmobile, our camp hosts that are volunteers out in our campgrounds. So without them, we couldn't do as much as we do. So we are very appreciative of all those volunteers that put in countless hours. Last year was the second year that we had kind of a photo contest, so basically wanting people to get out and take some snapshots, showing the different areas. This is from Powers Bluff in the springtime. If you've never been up there, it's a very beautiful place. Second one here is at Northwood County Park with a family that's tent camping along the river. Southwood County Park, Lake Wazicha. And I'm not sure where this came from, but it could have been in any one of our parks. Our resident geese park. So some of the events that we hosted last year, the Kiwanis Youth Outdoors Day, this is an event both winter and summer that we've been hosting, the whole site anyways, for several years. Gets a lot of kids out, and they get to enjoy all kinds of different outdoor recreation activities. Last couple of years, our staff, our ladies in the office have put together a fundraising event both spring and fall for our Powers Bluff project, and so they had a couple of those last year as well. The Autism Jigsaw Run, and this has been hosted for several years at our Southwood County Park. They utilize the walk trail around the lake. And again, this was the eleventh annual, so this has been a long, long-time event for us. A couple new ones that were just started last year, Bluegrass at the Lake. It's actually a multi-day bluegrass music festival, and that is based out of our enclosed shelter at Southwood County Park. They also had one this last year, and they would like to do this as an annual event as well. One of the events that's been there for a long time and is actually going to be starting in a couple days here, Thursday is the first day, but the State Waterski Show at Red Sands Beach out at Southwood County Park. Last year, it was kind of a neat, neat event. McMillan Library actually contacted us to see if we would be interested in hosting a movie in the evening, and their location that they chose was our Southwood County Park location, and so they had a movie on July sixteenth, kind of Under the Stars type of event. A lot of families came out there in campers and things like that. This was mentioned earlier, but we were asked to be one of the stations at the Farm Tech Days, so basically we had some materials there explaining our county forest system as well as some of our projects that we're looking at doing within the park system. This was a first-year event as well, Limitless Boot Camp. So this was a fundraiser, and it was basically a race that they utilize also the walk trail around the lake, but it also had an obstacle course, so it was pretty interesting. They are coming back, and they will be having another event this August as well. Another one that's coming back this year was the First Annual Pink Pumpkin Breast Cancer. So as you can see, the walk trail around Lake Wazicha is ideal for a lot of different community events, fundraisers and things like that. And again, this event is coming back again this fall at Southwood County Park. Now we'll get into some of the projects that we completed or started this past year. This is just a map here, Powers Bluff County Park. So last year in March, we had the final completed trails, master plan or conceptual plan done by IMBA, which stands for International Mountain Viking Association. And so that plan actually fit into something that we did again last year, was breaking down that larger project into a four-phase project. And so that was gone through with our HERC Oversight Committee, and it was approved, Phase One being entrance road coming from the north and construction of a smaller trailhead building. And so that's kind of what we're geared up for and trying to fundraise for and grant right for currently. Another project, mainly office staff, but with the help and basically the driver of this project being the Planning and Zoning Department, but we were able to... complete our comprehensive plan that's required every five years or so. And so that was a pretty long process. We had surveys that went out, public, public feedback sessions, as well as a presentation after everything was said and done. So that was a project that was completed last year. Speaking with Powers, or about Powers Bluff, one of the things that we did was we did create and kind of improve a small trailhead parking lot where the old farmstead used to be on the north side of Powers Bluff. In addition to that, we put up a bulletin board and we're able to complete about a two and a half mile cross-country ski trail and that was open this past season. And so this is the registration station, registration spot just off of Highway 10 that we were able to complete. That trail will eventually become part of the multi-use trail out there and it will be hardened with some sort of gravel surface. Currently it is just grass and it's not real ideal for summer months because there are quite a few wet areas, but it really worked well for our frozen ground condition as far as cross-country skiing. Another project at Powers Bluff, some issues that we've had over the years, this is the bottom of our tube tow area where everyone's hooked up on the, on the tow line. We had a lot of discharge area where the snow just kept shooting out and we had a lot of issues with hooking the gloves. So we actually constructed platforms that gives us a more permanent and stable base for the, for the hookup at that location. In addition, our tow booth up at Powers Bluff, so this is the top of the tube hill, we constructed a brand-new tow building, better location, the old building is still up, we are going to be taking that down soon, but it really works better with our, with our tow system being in the middle of the hill versus on the side of the hill, much more modern, doesn't have an old wood stove and much safer for our personnel as well. The retaining wall at Red Sands Beach, or excuse me, White Sands Beach was replaced last year. The old one was failing, it was put in in 94 and it was undercutting. There are a lot of issues that were coming out of that, so this project was completed last year through a contractor. The South Park Third Loop upgrades, so this is basically one of the final phases of our upgrades for our campsites. We've been doing this over the past several years, upgrading our electrical to 50 amp service because of the larger units and things like that. There's still work to be done with the pads. A lot of our pad sizes in our campgrounds are just too small for the, for the rigs that come in nowadays. So that's something that we'll have to work on over the years. But as far as electrical, this was basically the last phase as far as upgrading those sites to 50 amp for all three of the campgrounds. A project that we had done was at South, South Park Pine Plantation. So this pine plantation is about 30 acres north of any developed area in the park. It is still part of the park and we had a lot of disease, diseased trees and it was really getting thick in that area, so we did do a thinning of the pine plantation. We still have some work to be done as far as boundary identification and cleanup with the neighbors, but we are, are going to be working on that this fall and winter as well. The South Park Shop Edition, so this portion, basically we are going to be getting rid of the old shop. The old shop is located just down the road. It was the original shop, it's been there for many years and it's, it's basically just end of life. It's too small, it's, it's not real usable, it's not secure, there's no fencing around it. So what we did was we added on a bay, as you can see, and we are basically going to remove that old shop building and turn that into parking because a lot of people use that area for parking while they walk around the, the walk trail. Now just getting into numbers, so this is shelter building reservations and you can see it by location as well as by month. 120 reservations, that is obviously our year-round shelter building at Nepco, at Nepco. But we also have a lot of use throughout the parks. As you can see, 59 reservations at our South Park enclosed, 46 at North Park, for a total of 346 reservations throughout the, throughout the year. And these are just a few pictures of those different shelters that are available. This is just a slide kind of showing the different events and breakdowns. As you can see, our biggest user group are for weddings, whether it be the actual reception or rehearsal or what have you, but there are 78 different wedding events followed closely by graduation parties. So we had 75 graduation parties last year. This, this is just basically a three-year snapshot comparing, the top one is the shelter building. So 346 total reservations in 2018. The bottom one is camping user nights. And so this is a combination of all three of our, our campgrounds. Last year, we had a total of 15,078 camping unit nights. And this is a pie chart that we, I like to put up annually. It basically breaks down in-county versus out-of-county users, reservations out at our campground. Every year, that, that out-of-county number seems to be growing. This past year was almost a 60/40 split and when I first started, it was, it was actually more in favor of in-county users. So we are attracting a lot more out-of-county campers than we used to. And I think a lot of that has to do with our, our events that bring in a lot of different individuals. Three-year boat landing launch totals, last year, we've been around that 2,000 mark, but 1,900 user passes sold. So this, this data as far as the winter storms, this is not from the last year, so we had a very good volume of snow this past year. It was from the previous winter and so you can see our user groups for the ski trails at 109, that was a pretty good drop, but we really didn't have a lot of snow in it. It wasn't a very big window a couple winters ago here. And that's also reflective on our Powers Bluff two tow pass totals, 1,300 versus, as you can see, we had 4,200 the prior year, which was a much better snow year for us. In addition, obviously we're not just parks, we're also county forests. This is just a little graph that shows all the counties in, in Wisconsin that are a part of the county forest program. As you can see acreage-wise, we're at about 38,000 acres for county forests, which is kind of little lower than midway if you're to look at all of them. Douglas County being the highest at 278,000 and Vernon, the lowest at 997 acres. So this is in 2018, we had 10 different sales that were set up by our forest administrator and his forest tech, DNR as well. And so those total bits that came in for those 10 sales were for 476,000 approximately. Actual revenue that came in, in 2018, you can see here, so 2018 was about 454,000 of timber revenue that came in. And this shows basically a 20-year snapshot comparing from starting in 1999 up to 2018. And it shows kind of the trend. Obviously, it has been going up and that has contributed mainly for or from our hard work that our county administrator does, forest administrator, Fritz Schuber, he does a great job as far as getting out in the field and, and setting these timber sales up and really maximizing the revenue as well as keeping, keeping in touch with what, what the forest can handle with that. So with that, all revenues that come in for timber sales, they go, 10% goes back to the townships and it's all prorated based on the acreage of those townships. So as you can see, percent of total acres on the low end, Richfield with our Richfield 360 property, they're only at .95% of the total acres. They receive $431. On the higher end would be Hyos, 24.75%, and they received $11,240 last year. This is just a pie chart showing our different revenue sources as far as fees in the parks and timber sales. So as you can see, the big, big chunk out of there, the green are the timber sales and the kind of peach color is, is the camping operations. So that's everything. That's basically your camp reservations, your firewood, your ice, everything that's compiled and come in from the campground operations in our parks. This is just a graph showing the difference between 2017 and 2018 with all of those different revenue sources. The biggest fluctuation, as you can see, was the timber sale. So there was a, a large increase last year versus 2017. And as most of you are aware, a lot of that really deals with environmental and weather factors. So if we have a good winter and we have a lot of freeze-up, we're able to get a lot of those logging operations started or completed. If we do not, a lot of that property cannot be accessed without frozen ground condition. So, you know, we really rely heavily on what those winters look like for timber revenue and timber sales. Bottom line, basically this is a three-year snapshot as far as tax levy dollars. And so the far right column there, you can see 2018, park operation expenses 17, or 1.7 million, capital outlay expenses 34,000, revenues was about 1.1 million and use of our non-lapsing capital projects, we use $651. So the total for the net tax levy is 588,000 out-of-county expenses. The budgeted tax levy for 2018 was 653,000. So as you can see, we did very well as far as coming under what that tax levy was budgeted for. One thing I did want to point out and Supervisor Winch, we had a discussion prior to it. So when we look at this tax levy, this is, one of the items that is reflected in our revenues on this chart are all of our, our state aid programs. And so for example, we, we receive annual monies for our snowmobile state aid program, ATV. We also get a grant from the state for half of our county forest administrator wages and benefits. So all of those are reflected as a revenue on here. Supervisor Winch wanted me to point out that he believes that should be shown as a tax levy because those are fees that, that are paid by, by user groups. This is how we've always done it and this is how we've always shown it. So that's the reason why we, I did not make that change, but I wanted to point that out because Supervisor Winch asked me to. I just said be, be consistent and have all departments do that then, alright? Additionally, I just wanted to point out, and I had Marla from Finance put this together, basically I wanted to show, you know, what percent are we utilizing from our department on a countywide basis. And this shows from 2009 to 2018, the high being in 2009, we did have a few large projects going on at that time, capital expenses at 5.1%. 2018, we're basically at our lowest through that 10-year period, nine-year period at 2.3%. So if you look at the whole, whole pie chart of the county, our portion in 2018 was at 2.3% of that. Talking about the impact that we have in addition to all the other areas that people come to Wood County for, for tourism, this is just a graph that is put together by the state. In 2018, if you look at the upper left-hand corner, direct visitor spending, they had projected Wood County, or estimated Wood County at 96.6 million. That was up 3.94% from the previous year. So the impact of direct visitor spending in Wood County for, for different events, and I'm not going to say that the parks is a, is a majority of that, but I think that with the events and the camping and all the things that happen in our parks and forestry, I think we are a major, major player in that. And so it seems like annually, Wood County does, estimated does increase in that visitor spending. So I think that has to be thought about and reflected on as far as what is the, the total impact from having quality parks and forestry properties in our county. Just a couple more slides, this is just Facebook, so this is showing, you know, how much, how much reach we have via social media and this is basically up to 2018. So I know currently we have over 3,000 likes on our, on our Facebook page, so we are able to reach out and touch a lot of different people. We did relatively recently in June, Instagram, we did start doing that. It is something that we're trying to do more of, but it's hard to, hard to keep up on all of that when you don't have someone really dedicated for it. But we do what we can and we try to, try to get the word out via social media. And that's about all I have. So if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Chad from the board? Supervisor Clendetti.
Does the whole town actually get involved or do they kick back what we're doing a lot? That they're involved with the overall work? Do you hear much from them?
Yeah, so, so I do have a contact that I, that I reach out to if, especially with this long-range planning for Powers Bluff, we definitely do want to have the whole chunk involved in that. As far as, you know, historical signage, historical, anything that they may be involved with, they are, they are contacted, yes.
Supervisor Clendetti.
Thank you. With all the energy that many counties are taking, I know this is a 2018 report, well with the ATV, UTV, what do you think, I, we have it in our parks, the northern, we have all the, for ATVs.
Dexter Park.
Dexter Park. Is there problems with that? And I say because I'm from the Towne Grand Rapids where, you know, there's the thing about ATVs, UTVs that hasn't been resolved yet or, or taken up before that board. Maybe just that I, can we look at the parks department and what that causes there? I mean, would that be a good thing for us to look at?
Well, currently because it's somewhat limited as far as how many users go in there with ATVs, UTVs, we haven't had any issues that I, that I'm aware of. Is there potential? Absolutely. When we, when we went down this road or started going down this road, we know that there, there are always bad apples out there and there's going to be, be people that go off-trail and things like that. Obviously, we're going to manage it and design it where we can try and limit that, those issues. But, you know, I guess this is kind of the direction that we were, we were given as far as ATVs in the county. And I think if we can get ahead of the curve and try and maximize our, our use in our parks with those ATVs, UTVs, I think that'll be a, long-term, I think it's going to be a benefit. There's going to be headaches and road bumps, but I think all in all, I believe it's going to be a, a good thing.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chad? Thank you very much. And that takes us to the end of our business today. I would like to mention that, as Chad said, the water ski show is starting up this weekend. I was out in the park on Saturday and Sunday and the campground is full. I think that going to that week reservation probably made a difference. A theme I've had, had activity out there. Got great weather for it. So Supervisor Clendetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try not to fall asleep as Supervisor Clendetti mentioned, I was out at the NACO Conference this week. I actually was supposed to fly out of Vegas last night at 8:00 PM, arrived at 2:00 AM. The flights got pushed back three hours. I worked my way to Phoenix, into Milwaukee about four this morning and here, so I'll try to stay awake. But there's, there truly is value in having our supervisors attend the, our own Counties Association annual meetings, the NACO Conference. I handed Bill the book so he could look at it here. I mean, there's, there's this many programs in here that benefit counties. And I think the one thing I just wanted to allude to really quick, on page 262 of the packet we had today, it showed the county forest revenues. And I'm old enough and have been around long enough, I guess, on this board to go back when we used to do in the neighborhood of $100,000 of forest revenue a year. And we used to send our Parks Committee to the annual Wisconsin County Forest Association Summer Tour where we learned what those best practices might be. And the expenditure to do that was probably in the neighborhood of $2,000 to $3,000. But I want you to look at the revenues, you know, everything we should, we do should be based on that return on investment. We went to those meetings, we attended that, we looked at what they do in other counties and we've driven revenues from 121,000 in 1999 to an average over the last 10 years of about half a million dollars a year. And I don't know about you guys, but at home, if somebody said to me, you, I'll trade you your $3,000, $4,000 for a half a million bucks a year or a net difference of about $400,000, I'm all on board. So I guess the point I'm trying to make, and I'll sit down here real quick, is you cannot over-educate a county board or a county board member. So any opportunities you have to attend those webinars, seminars or conferences. So any opportunities you have to attend those webinars, seminars or conferences, I think really benefits you. And I hope every department looks at those opportunities. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Point well taken. Again, we have great weather for the Waterski Show. It's hot, it's extremely hot out there. Take care of your animals, take care of yourselves. Is there anything else that needs to come before this board this morning? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Supervisor Fisher, second by Tom Hantane. All in favor of that motion? Or if you want to.
No, I guess.
Thank you. Have a good day, everyone.